Columbia meeting of February seven, twenty twenty-three. We'd like to have the invocation by Dan Davis and that'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance by John Rhodes and Jeremy Sanford. Yeah.
Lord, bless those who hold office in the government of our city, if they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice, and help them to use their authority to serve our citizens faithfully. And Lord, we ask your blessing on our neighbors in East Palestine in their efforts to keep their citizens safe. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
States of American, and it's a very public which stands.
Yeah, you call the roll.
Here. 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 Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Here.
You've all received a copy of the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three minutes. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? If not, they'll be accepted as submitted. A reading of communication. I have a letter here that I would like to read real quickly. This is from the Fairfield Rurkin Club. The Fairfield Rurkin Club is requesting permission to have our annual classic custom and antique car show on Saturday, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. This event is one of our best promotions to help support the Fairfield Rurkin Scholarship Fund, which is provided to students in Columbia High School and Crestview High School each year. As in the past, we utilize South Main Street all day of the show with the understanding the show does not actually begin until noon and ends at four P M. We do not play any music or utilize the sound system until churches dismiss at noon. The street department normally places barricades in the alleys, which we use to control traffic the day of the show. Will you please request those be provided this year? We've had DJ play music and making announcements all afternoon. We'll work with the American Lease and Post two ninety for communication hookups. Thank you for your assistance. Sincerely, Rick Armson, Fairfield Rurkin Club. We'll deal with that motion later in the agenda. There are no reports of commissions and boards tonight. I am going to take an opportunity to make an adjustment to the agenda. And I would like to seek a motion to concur with the city manager, Lance Willard, and the chief of police, William Myers, to hire Courtney Gilbert as a full-time police officer for the City of Columbiana Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion, yeah, we call the roll.
Yes.
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 Hey, Courtney. Please come forward. Be sworn in.
How did you hear your name, please? I'm Courtney Gilbert. I solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Ohio. And charter and work hard by the way to the City of Columbiana. Faithfully discharge my duties.
Congratulations, Courtney. And we look forward to having you with us and joining our crew. Thank you very much. At this point in the agenda, I'm going to ask Dan Davis from the Community Foundation to present grant checks for the Summer Concert Series and for the mural replacement.
On behalf of the Community Foundation, we're very happy with this round of grant requests to award two grants. The first one goes for the Summer Concert Series, which is a great addition that Greg Gustafson heads up every year with the help of the park board. They do a great job bringing music to to the park every summer, so Greg can you forward and receive this check? Second check that you have to give out tonight. The beautiful mural that is in Columbiana Commons, believe it or not, is due for replacement. So we're very happy to be able to provide the funds to replace that mural. So Mr. Mayor, can you come forward and receive this check for thirty-five hundred dollars for replacement with the mural?
Mural is such a fantastic addition to the downtown or historic downtown. And it's so phenomenal that we're able to bring it back to good life again. So thank you very much again. What can we say about the Community Foundation? It's a tremendous organization and has done so many fantastic things for the city. And this is just the two more indications of that tonight. So thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. This is going to be a busy night, folks. I would just like to say that as we move to the manager's report, we're going to again make some adjustments. We feel in Columbia, it's very important that we continue our relationship with schools and people in the schools and try to hope and make sure that our young people feel a part of our city. And we're making many efforts here to do very many things to work with the young people. And I'd like to point out that John Rhodes and Jeremy Sanford have been joining us here at these meetings as representatives of Columbiana Schools and are representatives to the council. They've been great about coming here. I would like to mention that I think it was what, two, three weekends ago? Every year in Columbia County, they hold an academic challenge. And and it's a very important contest and all the schools participate in this endeavor. And I am very proud to announce tonight that Columbia won the academic challenge this year. And they get to move on to in June. And Jeremy and John are members of the Academic Challenge Team. And I think it's fantastic and we should congratulate them with applause. Appreciate their work. We have been involving the young people with the Columbia Area Tourism Bureau. Bureau, we have a project we're working on. The Chamber Commerce had purchased, I think, five more signs that say that are signed to designate the directions to go to historic downtown Columbia to let people know how to get to downtown Columbia. And we've taken on the project, the Tourism Bureau, to work with the city to get those signs up. And we set up a committee to look around and we asked John and Jeremy to work with us on trying to find locations to place those signs. So I asked the gentleman to make a few remarks on their their ideas and their thoughts and as they went around with us and looked at the city. So I'm going to turn it over to those gentlemen real quick.
Well, first of all, thank you, Dan, for inviting us.
Thank you for inviting us. That was very kind of you. We, the mayor, I think Mr. Minor, Tom back here, and Tom Makeel and the two of us. We went around Columbia basically looking for ideal locations to place signs, directing people towards the historic downtown and shopping centers. So it was very constructive, I think. We talked about some issues with the signs, some aspects that we felt were really good about them. And John will go over the locations where we think would be best fit to house the signs.
So there were four areas in particular that we identified as possibly good to put the signs in. The first would be at the intersection of West Salem and State Route fourteen, which would catch traffic, eastbound traffic on fourteen. The second area is by the Welcome to Columbiana sign on the north side, just north of fourteen by Burger King, just because that's such an iconic part of Columbiana. And the the third one was at the corner of East Park and and State Route fourteen. And the fourth would of course be seven and fourteen by Firestone Farms.
And speaking of that area by East Park and fourteen, there's already a sign existing there. I think it's a little out of date, so we discussed changing some of the businesses and organizations that are listed on there. Also illuminating it because there's no light on it at night. So we we thought really redoing that sign would be would be advantageous. And then also the nice thing is at the intersection at seven and fourteen, because Mr. Makeel was there, we we are able to put some signs on his property that would catch traffic from different ways. So that's super helpful, but we think the signs would be really good. Some potential issues were the color and print. It was really hard to see. That was the biggest concern. And the color could potentially be an issue. They were black signs with white print, so they kind of blend in depending on the background and the environment. But we think if we could enlarge in the print, that that would be best. But the signs would be really good to have in these in these strategic locations. So I think we concluded that there were some things to be changed about it, but ultimately they would be they would be a great asset.
And just one more thing, one more idea we had about the sign. We thought that maybe a red trim around around the box with the text within it might help catch the eye of people without changing the design too much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. That's some good insight. It was nice to go around with the young men and get their opinions on what they thought would be good. And I I'd just like to ask everybody. Here's my question. Do you know that there's one of those signs that are already up in Columbia? How many could tell me where it is? Because a lot of people I asked, you know, we have a sign that says to go to this historic downtown and nobody knows where that sign is. So but we did talk about that's a concern about making sure they're visible. And we really appreciate John and Jeremy working with it. I'm sure Bryce Minor is our chairman of the Tourism Bureau and and he's done a good job there. And, you know, we still need to continue to work to decide exactly what we're going to do. And the city will be working with us on the project. So thank you very much for your report. Thank you. Anybody have any questions with the young men? Very good. Okay, we are in the manager's report. And at this time, I'll turn the agenda over to our city manager, Lance Willis.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll just give a brief overview of the last couple of weeks and then we're going to do the overview of twenty twenty-two. The youth entrepreneur class that we've been working with for the parking lot out in front of Hogan's. Also, the wall of Holloway's has been featured in the Business Journal article. And there's also a short three-minute video on there. So if you can't find that, I can send you that link. I think we did. We did give you a hard copy in your manager's report, but we did not do anything with the video. Notice the youth, you know, did an excellent job in doing the interviews. And they are scheduled to March to go over to P A to do their presentation for those four entities that we talked about before. So it's, you know, nice to have the youth working on that too and getting recognized. It was such a nice article. I think it was in just two pages, but then progress and then just was highlighted. Yeah, the one from La Mancha. Thank you.
So the other article was about youth in industry, you know, what we can learn from them. And that was mainly revolving around Humtown and Mark La Mancha, who's part of the progress committee. We did, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, we placed emergency legislation on agenda to dispatch for Letonia. And that is on tonight, and we really hope it passes. And if it doesn't, Chief. They have been working very hard. We're holding our breath tomorrow to make sure everything works. It's been a it's been a it's been a process, but they started planning a while back and it's really helped. But you know, you may not, you know, may not think about it, but if, you know, somebody's calling there, it's it's going to roll over to our phones and it needs to be, you know, smooth transition. And that should be live as far as like ten A M. Tomorrow, I think. So we will all be holding our breaths. So thanks for all the work on that, Chief. Let's see, on a lighter note, we we had a pretty cool Journey Tribute Band last or a couple of weeks ago at the Cultural Collective. It was a packed house. It was a very nice event. It was great to see the theater thriving like that. I know they had another concert on Friday night, but I did not get to attend that one. But I hear it was it was it was very good. Let's see, since our last meeting, we discovered out at the water plant that we had some issues with the paint on the large water tower. That's called a standpipe. It's a million gallon tank. And we discovered it on, oh, I think it was the last week of January, mid January, right after our meeting. And we took it down last weekend of January, cleaned it all out and have it back in service now. And we were relying on two coats of paint in there, and that's the primer and the intermediate coat. And we need to get a final coat on there. So we are working diligently as quickly as possible to get first it out to bid. It's a big project. It's a very large project. We were not expecting this to happen. We did this in twenty eighteen and expected the last ten to fifteen years. And, you know, we're we're in the five years. So we did test it in twenty nineteen and it looked looked okay. So we are doing some research now, trying to find the failure. But we will be acting, bringing you various legislations and such in the next couple of meetings. We cannot stress it enough. We need to get it out there as soon as possible. We need to. It's going to be a big, big project. Going to have to train that, which, you know, we've done before. And we will have to do the inside and out. And I am currently applying for emergency, some emergency funding. Hopefully, we can get to subsidize that that project. So that'll be either next meeting or definitely by my first meeting in March, we'll talk about going out to bid on that. So right now, we're renewing the bid specs and should have that done soon. Did have a water break in the last couple of weeks, but they were able to fix it without issue. They did have a clarifier unit at the plant that needed service and several departments helped on that. We appreciate that. And they have it up and running again. That's a key to have redundancy out there at the plant, so we were able to rely on the one train. Basically, the the water plant's divided into two sections and they're running it in parallel right now. And you can take out one side to, you know, clean it out, and that's that's what they did. Okay, with that, I'd like to go ahead and share my screen here in a minute, but I guess I'll talk a little bit about how much can change in just a couple of hours, you know. We sent out this manager report on Friday and little did we know that the disaster over in East Palestine would happen. It's been been great working with them. I want to give hats off to all of our safety forces and and all the departments that were involved. I think they've done a great job over there in East Palestine. I know that we had officers there almost immediately. We had our our, you know, whole fire department over there. Within a few hours, they were were making calls and reaching out to us and making sure that if there were any other resources they needed, that we were available and we were, you know, on pins and needles all through that night. And cannot say enough good things about the all the safety forces going out there. And it's it's just, it's really, you know, first it puts everything else in perspective. But it gives you, it gives me hope and and sense of calmness that if that were to happen here, that the governor could be here in two to three days. I mean, that happened Friday night. And the governor was here Monday. And that's that's really, that's really good. And the National Guard's key. And, you know, we we, you know, we feel for them over there and we know it could have been us just as easily.
If it was ten minutes earlier, it would have been.
Yeah, ten minutes earlier, it would have been us. So my superintendent, some of them are out here tonight. We we hold Incident Command tabletop exercises. We do this every couple of years and we do it with County E M A. And we held one out here probably maybe twelve, fifteen years ago. That's the one I can remember best is we held it out at Upper Room. The the county came in, we had, you know, area people, you know, throughout the county that were there. And we had a scenario that we we did not know what scenario was when we were when we arrived. We opened it up and what I thought was going to be a real relaxed day. Quickly, in ten minutes, we were all on like, okay, what's what's what are we going to do next? So basically, what you do is you simulate or, you know, read through the the scenario and you go down through every department, whether it's fire, police, EMS, wastewater, water, electric, every everything that you can possibly think of. So we're all sitting in this this table and the scenario that I can remember was major trail, train derailment on the Elm Street Crossing, where cars came out and there's hazardous waste going in everywhere and on fire. And immediately, we, you know, I know Brian and I were there and we talked about well, that, you know, that stuff could get into the sewers and then, you know, go go into the water streams and, you know, what we have to do. So I know that a lot of the you know, residents are concerned about, you know, similar accidents. And but I assure you, we do practice this. And I think at least from afar, you know, I wasn't over there in East Palestine, but they've, you know, I think they've done a great job. I know that we've learned a lot from this incident. And I know they've learned a lot. And I know that they're perfectionists, the, you know, the first responders are perfectionists. And I know they want to do it, you know, better next time, if it would happen next time. But as far as I'm concerned, you know, we were, you know, I'm at home in bed and and they're out there on the on the on the front lines taking care of things. And it was it was really, it was a nice thing to watch. And it's comforting to know that all your, you know, tri-state areas listening and that's, you know, it's the national news. But they were all here within hours. I mean, a couple of hours, they were they were, you know, they had it together. And and we did have a station out in the east part of the city where there were lots of fire trucks filling up there. And and turning around and just that's all the, you know, some of the, everybody in that incident command has a job to do. And and it it works pretty well. And and I think that hats off to the chief over there in in East Palestine and the acting city manager, Tracy Spratt, who's the finance director. She's the acting city manager and the mayor. They've done a great job. And I just think that's great that they have the support from the U S P, U S E P A out here, the highway E P A, yeah, the National Guard and everybody else that's helpful. And then you see the random acts of kindness that are happening here. We have got, you know, restaurants, our pizza delivered twenty-five twenty-five pizzas to Best Western for people that have been displaced out there today at five o'clock. Last night, talked to East Palestine. And long story short, we've got fifteen dozen donuts delivered, donated by Dutch House, hundred breakfast sandwiches and hash browns from Burger King and sixty sandwiches from from Dunkin'. And we were, we delivered those this morning and it might sound something, I mean, it's something, you know, everybody wants to do something and they were able to do that. So I know that our pizza has offered to supply them food tomorrow, either lunch or dinner, and I'm not sure what what will happen. But Red Cross is, you know, in contact with us if if they need anything. And and again, we feel we feel feel bad for them, but we're there for them. And tonight, actually, Rob Witcher turned the lights on down Main Street for their their East Palestine school colors. So it's kind of cool. All right, well, that's, I will move on to the twenty twenty-two overview. And I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. Twenty twenty-two started out with a, you know, February of last year, it was early February, we were we were filming that Christmas movie and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But it was a really cool year and glad that they picked us to film here. To film here. One second here. Hey Dan, we're gonna have to stop sharing, we're gonna do this once more. Okay, one second. Here we go. Everybody did see me test this before the, the show, right? There we go, got it. There we go, so council overview, Richard Gibson was named Electric Superintendent very early on. Later that year, Mike Knopf left us at the water plant and he was a valuable part of our team. To get back to Richard, Doug had left earlier in, in the year, I believe it was actually, I think it might have been, even then in twenty. It's either in very early twenty twenty-two or late twenty-three, but Keith has done a wonderful job for us and so has Richard. You know, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of responsibilities on the superintendents. You know, they. Forty-nine miles of electric. Wiring throughout the town, forty-nine miles of water, water lines. And forty-nine miles, at least forty-nine miles of sewer lines. And then over, I think fifty or sixty miles of, of roadways. So we all have our own things that we have to worry about and they do an excellent job throughout the, throughout the year. We had a fires, the Firestones visited September eleventh of twenty twenty-two. A great, great time, we had the ribbon cutting at Idabel's Gathering Place there. Council passed a proclamation for Pat Tingle for September eleventh, twenty twenty-two, we'll see a picture of that a little bit later. You did pass a proclamation or for Coach Spade, you can see how. You know, that's, if you, if you, if you seen the video, that was definitely, he was definitely proud and, and definitely surprised. And that was a, that was a great, a great thing that, that, that you did there. Proclamation for Columbia County or Columbia Community Foundation, the end just awarded us two more. At the time of the proclamation, the, the Community Foundation, just in the past three years. Have donated hundred ninety-six thousand dollars to Columbia Projects. In those three years and now we're, we just added probably what, seven thousand to that already. So we really appreciate them doing that for us. We, council did complete short-term rentals and they did the bed tax for Columbia County portion of the city. There's, this is one of my favorite slides every year, but we, we landed between all of our departments. We landed, these are announcements, okay, so these projects weren't finished last year, they were just announced. Four million dollars in grants, don't, in donations in twenty twenty-two alone. And there's a lot of them there and you can see the pictures of the end, they're giving the, the checks throughout the year. So we do appreciate that, there's actually a couple, a couple of checks in there that, one is actually the BWC from the Chamber. And you know, it's, it's great to have such a great community to be able to have these resources and, you know, all working together. Some of the highlights there, the announcement of the Court Street, Prospect Street Stormwater Grant. It's one point six million dollar project and that is, it's gonna be happening like we're in engineering right now. Next big project was a one point nine million Beverly Ray Stormwater Project. And we're in the process of engineering that right now. And as we said on those announcements that those will take, that's number two and three. Will have our three done. Out of our top ten and that's quite accomplishment because those, those grants right there were, I think they were. Eighty-seven and a half percent grants, those two that we announced, which is absolutely amazing for stormwater. We did get three hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars of COVID funding, CCF Community Foundation did participate. Twelve thousand dollars for pool concession concessions and that was a youth project for Trish Miso's class. They teamed up with us and also. Sixteen thousand dollar grant for the park kiosk that Tim, Tim wrote there. Oh, let's see, so I mean, it's just, it just goes on, but we're, we're, we're just very thankful I see Joy of Christmas there for ten thousand dollars. Towards the park. And then that very successful Fix the Sticks campaign, fifty-nine thousand and counting as far as January thirty-first. And this is my very next best slide right here, since twenty fourteen. We've gotten thirty-three million dollars worth of grants that the community does not have to pay back. And that's a lot of work on, on all aspects of the, the city, it's the, the different apartments. And being able to be able to focus on these grants, they're, they're, we, we, Rick and I went to. USDA today, we, we saw them speak and they mentioned some of their grants are overwhelming to do. And I, I can attest to that, but they're well worth it and then FEMA is the same way. But we, we really appreciate all those. But I say this every year, but. You know, it's council working together, park board working together to get, get some of these things, planning commission. You know, we all, we're all rowing in the same direction and that's, that's allows us to do things like that, accept grants. And be able to focus on those because it does take a lot of focus. And so far this year, it's February seventh, we've applied for. Now, we haven't gotten them, but we've applied for another four million dollars since the Jan, January first. Community service, we could go on and on all night on this, but. You know, a lot of these are repeats and, you know, from previous years, but they're there every year to, to help us out, Ace Hardware. Works hard on the discount bags and, and distributed them for us, which makes our job easier. During leaf collection. The CCMA gives appreciation lunch to the employees. The Chamber of Commerce does the flower baskets, American Legion does the flags. American Legion wreaths across America, that's, that's great for the community, Women's Club does the flowers, there's actually, I mean, I. Just lots, lots of stuffs going on, appreciation breakfast for the chamber, really think the. You know, one of our secrets here is, you know, working with joy crit, or tourism and. Chamber of Commerce so closely, we, we just met Monday and we, we're gonna meet. First Monday of every month to make sure we're all on the same page and I think it's gonna pay off. Big time, because it, it really helps and it's, you know, it's infectious to work on these projects. I know that Danny and Bridget went to that. Seminar that we talked about that was up in Sandusky by, with, you know, that was thrown by R cap. And they came back with some ideas and we're, we're trying to, you know, start on, on doing some of those right now. Pat Tingle and R and B have been a very important part of this community, Greenford Church, they did, they cleaned up the park this year. With the park staff. So I've got some pictures here, the Memorial Day, very, very well attended, very nice day. And thanks to Mr. Becker for a wonderful event. This. The Christmas movie, it's, it was a pretty intense, it was about a three-week period that they were here. Every department in the city came together to do this, it, it kinda reminded me of a mutual aid type deal. Where, you know, they came in and met with us and we just, you know, tried to do everything that we could to make that happen. They picked us and. You know, we all, I mean, the whole community came together, but it was. You know, I was probably driving the superintendent's crazy, but you know, hey, we gotta get this or hey, can you get that? But it was, it was a really neat experience and I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit more. Later, but you can see some of the interesting pictures there, it's a really, really cool time. That lower right one is the producers and main actress over there. Progress Committee, that's. See, who did I run into, I, I, Danny Edgerton from the Chamber, she goes, boy, that committee sounds really fun. Well, it is, because we do lots of fun things, so we continue to work with Town Center and Associates, those are the consultants. That have made Beaver PA the, the way it is and we're gonna continue to work towards that. Columbia Corridor, we had a couple of projects that we worked on last year to kinda. Polish that off, we've got a couple more things, but. You know, it's coming together, OECD, we had the visits from France, the people from France that came for two days. Entrepreneur class are working on the parking lot right now and the upper right picture is, it says come visit us. And that class just did a video to the governor. And to ask him to visit us, well, he drove right by us and went over to East Palestine. They missed it by about that far, so the, the photo below it is. Progress Committee. You know, we have, you know, a lot of ideas floating around the community and one of them was a skate park and. You know, just ideas bounce around, well, we heard that Tony Hawk was gonna be up at Y S U, so that picture is. Nicole Ice and her family, Mark LaMach and myself, we went up and visited and actually had a backstage pass. Why she welcomed us and we met, we were the, we were the. How should I say this, most professionally dressed people in the room, I can tell you that. Everybody else was, they were definitely skaters, they, they actually thought I was security, I'm like, like, you know, I'm five-six, I don't know what I'm gonna do. But it was, it was a really cool event. The middle picture there, actually, Mr. Becker's in that picture was, was a really proud day. Where the OECD National or Worldwide Study, they. Met with the entrepreneur class right there and then on the left, which is not in the picture, was a French class. Oh, let's see what else we got, Main Street Theater, Columbia Cultural Collective, we're always trying to do things to team up with them. To make that theater successful, the statue project with the high school, we're, we are, are working with them. We hope to have a full life-size statue of the Clipper, original Clipper. In conjunction with the, the new stadium, we're working on that, we actually worked on it this week already. We're always looking to work on vibrant downtown and we were actually invited to our cap and art conference this year. And to speak about our successes with the progress committee in our downtown and then Trish Miso's is pictured there on the left and. Mr. Jackson is, they were being interviewed about the. Project there that we're currently doing and that was the video for the entrepreneur class that's working on right now. This just kinda shows the cultural collective and. You know, the successes and, and that they've had there, there was, that was a special needs program, I believe that was. Wizard of Oz, if I'm not mistaken, the. Let's see, the, if I'm not mistaken, the tourism actually wrote a grant to. Community Foundation, I believe, for, for movies and those movies that are shown, Pay What You Can. They kinda teamed up with the Cultural Collective and saw some pretty good movies there and especially you didn't, you didn't have to pay if you didn't, if you couldn't. So that was nice. The stage there on the right was. Was something I think that's really, really cool in that for everybody that was there, the, the, the theater was completely filled. And that is the cast and the producers of the Christmas. And what it, what it really meant to me and it kinda, it kinda made me feel so, for those of you that, you that were in the audience. And you, and you saw how much they appreciated Columbia and working with them. And how, how responsive all, you know, everybody was. You know, they were from out of town, they, they weren't from here, they were from all over the nation and they spent a good ten minutes talking about how great it was to work in with our team. And that's, you know, it's a proud moment and, and it's, and it's worth it, it's. You know, it's, you know, it was a lot of work doing that, as I said, almost every, every. You know, every department was involved in that and, and, and they could see that we were passionate about it and it's. It kinda reminded me of the feel, you know, when there's a mutual aid event needed. That we all come together and, and work bigger as a, as a team, we're small town, but you know, we're. We, you know, play bigger than we are. Columbia Corridor, we did put up the. The dividers there from, that were donated by the Compco. And if you remember, the entrepreneur class actually wanted to put a aquarium up there, but we thought that the, the needs. Was gonna be too much maintenance, so we have a screensaver on that TV up there that comes on and kind of a makeshift aquarium. So fireworks out at the, at the park, that's, I believe that's the country concert that occurred. I just, now I'm gonna go through some of the, the different apartments. Just the different projects we've had to do, I think they've had to put that pole up a couple of times, people were. I think that was the second time this year, we had to stand the one on the right up, but the one on the left is, they tell me that is from a. If you can see that pole on the left is broke, it's a pretty new pole and it's pretty far off the road. And I don't know if you were out there chief, but that's from a car wreck. High-speed chase and there's no, there's no tracks there, that means they were airborne when they hit it. And we had to, you know, replace that pole. Substation batteries, we've been talking about this, these substations and switch gears have batteries. This picture was taken in twenty twenty-two. Next year, you'll have a picture of the one that they sent me today that, that was installed. One of the, I think it was a south sub where, where installed and put in service today. These are lots of maintenance, all, you know, when things go down, you have to have backups, redundancy. And this is part of that and it's very important to maintain that and when you have a utility like that, you, you know, you have to have. Passion about doing that, it's forced man repair, this is usually all, all hands on deck, where this is. Believe that's a wastewater line, but you know, got the streets out there and the water distribution working together. To get those, those done. Is wastewater plant, this is a belt that Brian could speak better, but I believe the, the first one was supposed to last about five years. But this, we got a lot more use out of it than that, I believe. Yeah, so we, we've got, we got our money's worth out of that one because. You know, they take very good care of that, so this is, this press that you're looking at is, is, it, you know, you, you see. In my report every, every week, then it says sludge pressed, well, sludge is not pretty. I mean, it is, it's, it is not pretty at all, it's ugly stuff. Sludge pressed. Well, sludge is not pretty. I mean, it is, it's, it is not pretty at all. It's ugly stuff. But there's, there's the press right there and it looks like, pretty much like the day it did. In twenty oh-five when we um, cut the, cut the ribbon. And it's all about taking pride in what you do and. Cleaning that belt properly for, you know. Eighteen years, um, did I just say that? Eighteen years? Wow, um. You know, it, it's um. It pays off in the end. This is another, this, this looks like a military expedition um. And. This is the big snowstorm of twenty twenty-two. This is when you could not get into our pizza because the, of all the snow. And our crews, which probably pretty much every department was out there helping. And you know, we had a no parking ban or, you know, parking ban there. And this is a um. You know, we were all in bed and they were out through the night working on this and I did not get up and take a picture up there. That's from our camera uh, down by the post office. Um, actually, I think Jesse got that picture for us, but. That is coming together and, and, and taking uh, care of that uh. Taking care of things. You can multiply that by about fifty or a hundred and that's. You know, what, what it, what it looked like over there on Friday night. Stormwater Project in the West Salem Street. These, you know, these projects are great. It was a three million dollar project, give or take. It was uh, eighty-seven and a half percent grant, but. It was difficult, you know, you have to, it's difficult for the residents. Um, they couldn't get to their homes. They had to park different places. And, you know, you have a, a company in here that is gonna, you know, build stormwater, but what happens is. You find things that are in the middle of the road you didn't know was in the road, or you. You know, you hit a water line or you, you know, or you have to move a water line. So this was a very, this project um, was exhausting. It's um, it, it exhausted our resources at the water plant, wastewater plant, and the street department and uh. Spent hours and hours out there uh, getting that done, but at the end, it's, it's a really great product. Product and we're very thankful and we're setting up the infrastructure for the generations to come. And you know, we only have to do this once, so. It's nice to get uh, get it done and. You know, I'm sure the neighbors appreciate it now, but it was uh, it was not fun. Couple more pictures of it. It's a paving project um. Heck Road uh. That was an ODOT project, uh, let's see. I think it was a ninety-five percent grant on that one. So uh, that bill was um. I think it was a one point seven million dollar project. And we were able to uh, pave that for uh, five percent of that. This is uh, I don't know if you saw this machine, but it was basically on the front of a skid steer. We, when you come through and you pave something, you have to raise the manholes. And this was that crew, they basically, it's like a cookie cutter and it, it drills down through there. Pulls a plug out and then they uh, raise that. And then um. Jesse's here tonight, but he successfully got the, the sidewalks. Um, put in that last project and we really appreciate that. That was uh, for the last ODOT project. Those um, sidewalks that led from the, the square out to the park. Some water line out in the middle of the field um. That uh, we had to repair. And you know, when you're out there on that stormwater projects, you, you find these lines, you don't know where they're going, so you have to put all these probes in there. And there's three um. Three paths that are coming very close and you got to figure out which one goes where. To put uh, you know, the shot offs in the right spot. This is a pretty um, pretty cool process. The, the line here on the right is a um, a, a. A water line. And its pressure is probably operating pressure, I don't know, forty, forty PSI maybe. And. We, what we do is it's called an assertive valve, I believe, that you, you kind of strap this on there. And so it goes over the, over the line, it's pressured. Nobody, we haven't, we haven't. Lessen the pressure on the line, as far as I know. And then you come out here with this red part, excuse me. And um. This is a drill over here on the, on the left. And it drills through the, through the uh, valve. Into the sidewall of that water line and then takes that coupon back out. And does it all while under pressure and clean. It's um. All um, sterile when they do it. And those are very handy, they are very expensive, but uh. In particular um, instances are very worthwhile. Here's the uh, Idabel's Gathering Place. Never did I believe I'd see a uh. An orchestra out at the park, but um, four orchestra, and that was the Firestone Orchestra that they kind of threw together uh. It was a really nice event. That was on September eleventh. And uh, later that night, uh, that tinga was uh, given the, her a proclamation that uh, you all passed. Our safety force is out. See some youngins in there. And um, you know, that's, that's really. We've always been really good at that as far as getting our youth engaged uh, early and kind of uh. You know, getting them in the system early, so they'll, they'll stay long and uh. And we've had a lot of swearings in, in, in the, in the past um, few years and that's really nice that, that we're able to do that. Uh, K nine units. It's hard to believe, um, do we, how long have we had Suti? Probably. Four and a half, five years? Yeah, five years. Be retiring soon. This was a, a planning commission where the ham radio class came to talk about. Uh, installing a TV or an antenna at the school. And they were really impressive um. I'm, somebody can probably tell me her name. I can't remember her name now, but uh. The one girl that's uh, there that did most of the speaking.
Katie Campbell.
She was very impressive and is uh, very seasoned in the ham radio. And probably one of the most recognized um. People in, in the. You know, in the industry, it's, it was uh, she put on a clinic.
I think she was thirteen when she got her technician license.
It's unbelievable, it's unbelievable. We were in awe. I mean, we're like. You know, you don't really need to be here, but we want to hear what you have to say and, and that's what's nice about this ham radio class. Jeff Jackson and Wade Bulley, they stood back, they didn't, they didn't talk, they let the students do it and. And uh, they, they, I mean, they're, they're young and they, they did a great job. So Columbiana's Future, we're almost done here um. We've, we've been talking about water rate study uh, for a while. We're finishing up a lot of the fiber optic communication, so we're, that one's going to drop off here soon. Um, we're going to continue to collaborate with the Port Authority. We were actually down there today with uh, with the meeting with the USDA. We're uh, working with an economic development uh, both here and, and the county level. We're still holding business attraction meetings. Uh, which, you know, it's very, you know, it's been very successful. Uh, we've, you know, we've gotten, we've landed some pretty cool businesses. I mean, if um. Savvy's is one of them and I think that we can uh. You know, I think that we, we helped that happen, so that was, that was really nice. Uh, New Industrial Park, we've been talking about that for, for a long time. Uh, we may, maybe even found some uh, source of funding today. We're not real sure, but uh, maybe asking USDA if they can help us. Uh, Stormwater Utility, uh, you know, eventually that system might get so big that we have to have somebody out there cleaning that as well as this, the sewers. Town Center and Marketplace, that place is growing out there. Or uh, and then across the street, which is where the barn is, uh, you haven't been out there, it's, it's amazing. And you know, uh, you know, our utility uh, workers were out there, you know, most of the year working on those projects. Lake, Lakefront Golf Course, uh, just giving you an update on that. We've been talking about that since I think twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Actually, Rob's here tonight, but uh. We've got um. We're, we're very close to bringing you the tip that you. That you authorized me to, you know, to sign, but uh, we're still working on it. Should be in the next meeting or so. And we've got some bound copies here uh, before you leave, kind of give you an update, but uh. Keep that project going. That project um, in, in kind of parallel. Uh, we've been working as a, as a team here on the um. The sewer, sewer line project and the water line project that is going to coincide with that. And that's um, lift station will get rid of one of our biggest headaches that Brian has, right, Brian? Yeah. It is uh, it's a total nightmare to pull a pump there and uh, we are going to have a party. Uh, after we get to uh. Take that out of service. So we, we had tabletop here. We, uh, just a meeting here this last month. I brought in uh, the sewer, the sewer guys um. It's about, I don't know, eight o'clock and it took about an hour and a half, two hours. We were just working on the logistics of getting. First, getting the, the, the lift station there, but then how are you gonna, how are you gonna get it um, installed afterwards? And how's that gonna? How are you gonna take the other one out? And so we have decided to put. Both of them will be in operation until the one is uh, ready to be put on uh, and, and is tested, so um. So the wastewater guys left and then the water guys came in. We had a round table talking about, well, if we're here, why don't we just do this and that? And uh. It was a, it was a real learning experience. We do that with our engineers. Uh, and actually Electric Department, um, we actually ended up bringing him in too. Uh, we need to continue to work with the uh, Columbiana's Future. Uh, police training and standards have always been important and are getting more important. Size of the workforce is um. You know, is a concern for us uh, growing in here in Columbiana and we've been talking about administration building. Uh, this next slide is pretty, oh, it is pretty gone, huh? There we go. That is awesome. Okay, Dan, you're up. Uh, Dan Lawan, I think we'll. Okay. Yeah. Almost there. I can see it on mine. Right there. I got the idea at three thirty in the morning for this slide. And I was thinking about ev- everybody, it takes, it takes a, you know, village um, to, to do this, but. You know, you, you think about a lot of things when, when things happen over in, in, in East Palestine and all the mutual aid happened. But those are all the names of the people that were on city staff in twenty twenty-two. There's a hundred and sixty-four people that made Columbiana happen and made it, made it special. So. There's part timers there, there's every, anybody that got paid uh, besides council and, and the mayor, I left them out, but uh. They um. It was a, it was a. I mean, it, it, it takes a lot of people, you know, that, all the pool people there, uh, EMS um, and firemen are, are there. What's that? Are they? Oh, I missed them. I, I meant to, I meant to pull them out, but and put, put them at the top, but uh. So that's, that's it. That's, that's all we did in twenty twenty-two, so. Yep. So thank you. And again, that, you know, part of my teams here, but um. You know, it's uh, they uh, they. They make decisions out there in the field and, and are out there working hard and we appreciate that and we appreciate the staff uh, too, from. From the office uh, all the way up, you know, the, the, all the public works and police department. Um, all those names on that list is uh. It's pretty dark. I mean, that's a lot of people, so uh, just for the record, we have fifty-one full-time employees. We don't have. But uh, it takes a lot of part timers to uh, get that going, so.
Thank you, Lance. Um. I'd just like to take one second to say that. When I went to the USDA, you know, you talk about USDA, you think about food processing or something like that, but um. USDA has tons of money. And we have, uh, you know, they, they have a lot of money and we, in the city of Columbiana. It was almost embarrassing to me because during the meeting with all the people from all the Columbiana city and village and county officials. And the USDA kept saying, we keep, you know, the prod, the great projects we have in Columbiana. You know, they mentioned us like four times and I just want to say this, that after the meeting, I was talking with. You know, this is the Director of USDA for the State of Ohio. And he said, you know, we do give money to the city of Columbiana. Because we know that you're a single-focused community from your council to your employees and we've had so much success. With cooperating and coordinating our services with the city of Columbiana. I thought, I mean, this man was very serious, so. You know, we're on that radar, there's more money there and we talked about that today. And you know, it's really exciting. And then I just want to say one other thing. I'm a Columbiana Clipper in and out my whole life. But I have a brown tie on tonight. And I'm doing that because one of the things that came out at the meeting today, when we had all these communities there. Is we all know that East Palestine is going to be going through a very rough stretch of time. And it's going to take all of us and all of our communities, you know, to help uh, bring them back. To some form of normality. And the colors in East Palestine are brown and orange. I like red and white, but um, I have my brown tie on tonight to signify. That we're going to have to continue to work with that community. And uh, we got to all be a part of the team. I know I was talking to Lance with eleven thirty Friday night and he's on the phone. With the city, the acting city manager and we're going to have to continue that kind of support. And uh, we have to all keep that in mind. And you could see all the other communities, Salem and Waterford and. All the other communities are like, you know, we're all going to have to get involved in that process, so um. I uh, I'm really glad Lance told me to change the lights out here on the bistro lights in town and I think we have to show a, show as a symbol. That we are supportive of that community. So just wanted to make that point. Um. Okay, uh, thank you again Lance and I, and now we will return. Um, we, you did receive a copy of the Building and Zoning Department Report for January twenty twenty-three. And the Columbiana EMS Department Report of that same period. Any questions or comments on those two um, items? Uh, hearing none, you've also received a copy of the bill list of uh, February seventh, twenty twenty-three. Any questions on the bill? Hearing none. I will move to old business and I'm seeking a motion to read all ordinance and resolutions by title alone.
So moved. Second.
Dami color roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-three dash R dash six one six. This is second reading. A final resolution enacted by the City of Columbiana here and after referred to as the local public agency, LPA. In the matter of the resurfacing of a portion. Of State Route fourteen within the city limits. P I B one zero seven five four five in the city of Columbiana.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Questions or comments on the motion? Dami color roll?
Yes.
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 Okay, I would, I would like to ask for a motion to read the following ordinances, ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, Dami color roll?
Yes.
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 Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three one five six emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager and or his designate to enter into an agreement with the village of Letonia. For the provision of dispatching services to the village of Letonia.
So moved. Second.
Second, any questions, comments on the motion? Can we call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Good luck, chief.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three one five seven. This is the first reading. An ordinance setting rates for renting the Firestone Swimming Pool. And the VIP lounge area if repealing any other ordinances or resolution in conflict here with. Outlining rental fees and policies.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. You call the roll, please?
Yes.
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 Motion to enter into a into the MOU. Between the city of Columbia and the Ask Me Union regarding a wage scale adjustment. Memorandum of understand.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Do you answer?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve the request from the Fairfield Ruin Club to hold their annual classic custom and antique car show. Sunday, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, from twelve noon to four P M on South Main Street.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Yeah, we got it covered.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, any questions on the motion?
Uh I just wanted to clarify, because I think when you read it earlier, you said Saturday?
That would be correct. He did say Saturday then, but he meant Sunday.
Did I say Saturday?
Absolutely.
All right, so it's Sunday then.
I thought only my wife told me everything's wrong.
Although we're more than happy to correct.
Yeah, call it the D and D team. We just, we set you up and got you going.
Actually, she called in.
She called you. But we're changing that to Sunday. Sunday, July. Okay. Yeah, you're fine. Could we uh, can I call the roll?
Yes.
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 See if I can get this right. Motion to confer with the city of Columbia's tax incentive review council. For the continuation of the commercial industrial community reinvestment area agreements.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Can I call the roll?
Yes.
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 Okay, um. We are. Are going to be going into executive session. There'll be no action taken after the executive session, so um. For those of you that want to go home and hear the others state of the union. Uh presentation.
Well, you can stay here.
Um, so we'd like to move in the agenda, an opportunity for anybody sitting out there. That would like to make any comments, this is your opportunity. You thought about saying something tonight. Any words of wisdom for us? Yes, yes, you may.
Good evening. Oh, hello.
You can, you can.
Can I bend it? Oh, there we go, okay. Uh my name is Kinsey Candray. I am a resident of three two one Kingwood Drive. Um, I am a graduate of East Palestine High School, so I just appreciate the support that you've shown tonight for that community. Um, when I've been following it very closely since Friday night, as I have lots of friends in the area. Uh and one of the things that continually came up was the um. Sort of lack of information that was being presented to the residents. Uh they felt that they could have had more frequent updates. Uh throughout the incident as it was developing, instead of needing to wait for the larger press conferences. Uh so I was just wondering if city council um has in place any sort of a text message or email system. Uh for residents in case of an emergency such as this, or um I know uh Mr. Willard, you mentioned Beaver. Um Beaver has a system similar to that where they can text and email and call home phones uh if there's. Imminent information that needs to be put out, so I just wanted to pose that question to the council.
Believe the chief, so does the police department operate something like that?
Actually, the city.
City does, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we just uh adopted it uh probably, I would say, September. And we encourage you to get online at columbiaohio dot com. And uh we will have updates uh there for particular projects. You can put um. When you sign up, you're gonna put your email there, and you're gonna say what you want to be notified for. You know, whether it be weather or 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 everything, it's just a kind of an à la carte type thing. And we would um. You know, update that as needed as far as our super tenants are concerned. So what's nice about this program? Specifically in your neighborhood is if we had a. We had a water break, I mean, you you had to deal with the uh construction project. Uh the whole time, so. We didn't have this prod, we didn't have this uh software prior to September last year, but we think. We're gonna be good enough at it when we do the one down at Beverly and Ray. Or at Oaks Wolding, the next stormwater project that we'll be able to say. You know, we'll be able to go into like Beverly and Ray and say, look. We are gonna be doing this project. It's gonna be a war zone down here. Please log on, and we can get you messages out via this. And uh it's very pinpoint where. You know, somebody that lives out at Homestead, they're not gonna get that message. We'll just be very isolated, so we do have something like that um. And I know that the school has um. You know, I think East Palestine relied on the school very heavily, th- their system. Uh ours is not um. You know, I mean, it has a lot of bells and whistles. It doesn't have it all, but uh it's 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 better than what we did for um. What we had before uh the before twenty twenty-two, so.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Um, first of all, thank you very much for coming up. You did a great job, and it uh, your question intrigued me. And maybe we need to, maybe we can work on getting a better communication format out there, so residents are aware of it. This is a thought, and so it's really great you brought that to our attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other comments? Any comments from council?
I'd like to suggest that when this episode on East Liverpool or East Palestine, I'm sorry. Is kind of put to bed, we gather together all the. Business, not gathered together, but get the names of all the businesses that have. Uh contributed to and such to the workers. Uh get something out there that gives them a little pat on the back and, you know, support them because they supported us. And also maybe uh give them a little letter of uh. Commendation or whatever you want to call it, that says, thank you very much for supporting us during this.
Proclamation day might be better naming each one of those businesses on it, do it all at one time.
Yeah.
Bring them all together, show them how much we care about what they're doing. Well, I guess it's my turn. I'm always good for a comment or two. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank my good friend uh Dale McCullough. For serving on our fireman's board. I believe it's been ten years, Dale, that we've been together, and and he has decided to uh. Take a little bit more relaxation and back off for a little bit, not like Ted and I, I guess we've been. We're hanging in there for a little while longer, so, but uh Dale, I'd publicly like to stand and thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Great. You're you're what? You're an indication of what makes us a great community, people that put their time in for the benefit of others. So that's great. Any other comments?
I just have something that's sort of on the lighter side. Uh, talking about the signs, putting up, talking about where uh downtown Columbia is or uptown, whatever you want to call it. Uh, probably about five or six years ago, my wife and I had dinner down at the Chinese restaurant on uh off of fourteen in the plaza there. And there was a lady who came rushing in asking for her order that she had called in, and the owner had no idea what she was talking about. And so I just made a comment to her because I was standing there paying my bill. That maybe she had got placed the order with the other Chinese restaurant in town. She said, there's two Chinese restaurants in town. I said, yeah, the other ones, the other ones in the main downtown area. And then she looked at me and said, you mean, this isn't downtown Columbia? So I think having the signs up is is really worthwhile.
I just want to say, uh, you know, other superintendents here, uh, and the amazing job that that our. Our city team does every single day, and you know, we've seen it even even more so, I think, over the the past few days, where. The uh an entire community of three states, God knows how many counties, how many s- communities um. And we, and just everyone comes together and works together, and and this this team is a real great example of how that happens. Um, and you know, you had a list of a hundred and sixty-five names, you said. And my name was on there, but I feel like I'm probably one of the least important people on that team, just because you guys are the ones that actually make it work. We we just tell you what to do, and you go and do it, so. I just wanted to thank you all for for all of your hard work.
What else?
I I just like to, I mean, say thank you for pointing that out. Um, you know, it does help when when um we know you have, we have your support. And we can make those decisions, and we can stand by them, right or wrong, you know, some, you you know. Have to make a decision, and uh both of them might be bad, but you gotta, you gotta pick the lesser of two evils, but um. You know, that. When when you don't, you know, when the council and planning and park board and everybody gets along like that. And we're all rolling in one direction, it really helps us focus on what we need to focus on and not be distracted by noise, so. It's good stuff.
Any other comments? Well, it's been an interesting meeting. Appreciate all the input, and uh thank you for your attention. At this time, I will look for a motion to go into executive session for the person. Purpose of discussion of personnel, section one twenty-one point twenty-two G one.
So moved.
Second.
Can we call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay, motion come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, can I call the roll?
Yes.
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 Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.